Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the viewer, to get a closer look at our local candidates as we talk about issues that are important here in our community. We've gathered questions from social media, from emails, civic groups, and narrowed them down to some questions about topics that are important to us. This is all leading up to the general election, which is on November 8th, and we will encourage you to go vote. Today, we have a guest here. Her name is Dawn Hale, and she is a candidate for city commission, so we're going to talk to Dawn. Hey, Dawn.
Hey, Kathy.
Thanks for coming.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
Absolutely. So, this is your first run at city commission. You previously served, and you can talk about that. So, I want you to take this opportunity to talk to our viewers and tell them a little bit about yourself and then why you're running.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I grew up here in Frankfurt. I graduated from Frankfurt High. Met my husband, he was our state journal paper person. And my younger sister had a big crush on him, so she used to be there all the time to see him either collect or deliver the papers. One day she wasn't there, the rest is history.
Oh, jump right in.
Yep, things were a little tense around our house for a while, but she adjusted. Graduated from, as I said, from Frankfurt High, went to Kentucky State, got an undergrad in political science and economics, and a master's in public administration. I have a daughter, Laura, who lives in Lexington. She's an accountant there. She and her husband live there. I started being active in the community in the early eighties with the South Frankfurt Flood Wall. John Sauer was the mayor then, and it, you know, was after the 1978 flood. And so Frankfurt finally met the cost benefit ratio with the Corps of Engineers, so there started the discussion for the flood wall. Well, there was a lot of back and forth, question about alignment, question of who is going to pay for it, et cetera. So, actually, it was quite controversial at the time, even though people don't really understand that now. So, it took us about 10 years to get the South Frankfurt Flood Wall, but we stuck with it, and it's there today and protecting our neighborhoods.
And we appreciate it.
Yeah. And so, I've also served on several different boards and commissions, fulfilled a term here on the city commission. I really, really enjoy public service. It sounds dorky when you say it, but I love this community. You know, I want to see it grow and prosper, and that's really why I'm running, because I think it's important that we see our city progress. If we don't progress, we're left behind. And I think a lot has already been said about how we have fallen behind our surrounding counties. And, you know, we can sort of write off maybe Scott County because of Toyota or whatever, but when we're behind Anderson County, that just sort of screams at me that, you know, we need to change some of the things we're doing. And so, that's why I'm here today.
Okay. Well, why don't you share with us some experience that you have that you think qualifies you to be on the city commission?
Well, the fact, my education, and the having been on the commission before.
Okay, well, tell people how that happened, because you didn't run.
No, I didn't run. And Katie Haddon moved to the county.
Okay.
And so, there was the vacancy, and the mayor then had to appoint someone.
Okay.
And so, he appointed me, and I was voted on by the city commission to fulfill that term.
I see.
And then I've served on, I was chair of the Ethics Board for three years, served for six. That's by ordinance, that's all you can serve on that. Was here on the Plant Board Board for four years.
That's right. Full disclosure, Dawn and I know each other. She used to be, she was treasurer of the Frankfurt Plant Board.
Right, for four years. Totally enjoyed serving on the Plant Board. Served on planning and zoning. Can't say I enjoyed that. Gosh. And I was the Norma Rae of neighborhood associations.
Okay.
When Mickey Mills was the mayor. And he, so the neighborhood associations, I think, have a real place in our community and in their interaction with city hall, because it lets people know what the important issues are in the various neighborhoods. So, I think the experience that I've had in working with different groups of people and being involved in the different boards and commissions and previously on the city commission, I think it probably gives me more experience than anyone else that's running right now.
Okay.
So...
Well, you know, that kind of leads me into my next question, because we're looking at, there are six candidates on the ballot for city commission. The top four vote-getters will be elected to serve.
Right.
So, what is it that distinguishes you from the other candidates?
My experience, I think, because I think that I have more experience than they have in city government and in working with different groups of people. I think the work that I did while I was here on the Plant Board with working with the Tanglewood Neighborhood Association and talking with them and with the Plant Board's great staff in being able to come to a compromise to get the reservoir built. You know, I think it's important that people are able to have that conversation. You know, I think it was President Obama that said, "Too many times we sacrifice the good for the perfect." And I think we, in our community, I think we have a tendency to do that, too. In the public sector, you very seldom get the perfect.
Yeah.
Because the system is set up for compromise. And I think, again, you know, both the flood wall and the reservoir are examples of my being able to work with different groups of people to get things done. The city commission right now is not doing a very good job of working with the county to get things done. And I think there, again, we're one community. City and county need to work together, and I think I can do that.
Okay. So, right now, what do you think is the biggest issue facing the city commission or that, you know, could make Frankfurt better? And how do you propose to address it if elected?
Okay. I think one of the biggest issues right now is the $4 million shortfall that the city is facing. You know, they talk about fiscal year '24, and so it sounds like a long ways away, but we're in fiscal year '23.
Right.
And so, fiscal year '24 starts July 1 of next year. And so, they've got to be able to do something to meet that $4 million shortfall. There's talk about raising taxes, for instance, on the insurance tax and the 911 tax, starting to have fees for garbage collection.
Right.
I think those are big issues that the city is going to have to face. And, um, do you want me to go into what I think we ought to...
Well, that's my question. You know, we've heard about the impending revenue shortfall. We've seen presentations about how there's probably going to be these taxes happening. So, if elected, what steps would you support to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Okay. I do not support increasing taxes. To me, that is an absolute last, you know, thing that we need to do. I looked, just out of curiosity, to see what I pay in insurance tax. I looked at my car insurance and my homeowners. I pay about $125 a year in the insurance tax. I think that's a very regressive tax. I think, you know, we want people to have car insurance. It's the law, I think, you know?
Yeah.
And yet, by increasing that tax, it makes it that much more difficult for people to be able to do that. So, I think, you know, the city is talking about hiring some new, creating some new positions. I would have a freeze on hiring in city hall right now, except for police and fire, you know, things that are actually essential. I think that we need to look at how we're spending the money.
Yeah.
Before we talk about raising taxes.
Well, you know, we're at a time of high inflation.
Right.
It's affecting all of our residents. It's affecting you.
Right.
And again, the city commission is discussing these multiple tax increases. What, you've named a couple, but are there any other, what belt tightening could you, as a city commissioner, advocate for to make sure the city's not spending money that it doesn't need to be spending? And, you know, the city commission will need to live within its means, just like everybody else.
Right, yeah. And I think, you know, within our own personal budget, if we have a decline in revenue, we cut out Netflix before we chop the grocery bill. And I think it's the same in city government. I think we need to tighten the belt in city government. For instance, what is spent on public art? You know, public art is a wonderful thing, but it's not essential. And so, we need to look at some of those non-essentials that we're spending money on and maybe postpone them at least, because we have, we're not like the federal government. We have to balance our budget.
Right.
And I think people are having a hard enough time right now without having increased taxes.
Okay. Well, we're talking about budget stuff. So, can you tell me what experience you have in dealing with large budgets?
Well, from being here on the Plant Board.
Yes.
You know, the Plant Board's budget is over $100 million. The city's budget is a little over $40 million. And so, I think that gave me good experience. David Denton can testify to the many, many questions I asked him about the Plant Board's budget. I think the Plant Board does a great job. I tried to look at the city's budget for this upcoming, you know, current fiscal year.
Yeah.
And it's not online, and they don't have it on paper. And so, all you can see online is the budget resolution that doesn't go into those line-item details. And so, you know, without having the opportunity to actually look at the budget, to look at those line-item details, unfortunately, I can't go into as much detail as I would like to, because I just haven't seen it.
Okay. Well, we're talking about ways we can be more financially responsible, and one thing people might talk about is merger, as a way to, you know, be more efficient with our city and county government. Is that something that you would support? Is it something we need to revisit?
Okay, I was on the first merger commission.
Uh huh.
And I voted for that.
Okay.
I felt it was a good charter, and I voted for it. The second merger, I voted against.
Okay.
Because there was something in that charter that I just didn't think would work. And so, I voted against it. I think merger is good in concept. We are one community. You know, we're not like Louisville that has Jefferson Town and St. Matthews and, you know.
Yeah.
We are one community.
Yeah.
So, it makes sense. Why do we need two parks departments? Why do we need two planning and zoning departments?
Right.
You know, et cetera. So, I think merger is something that could work for this community, but I think if we're going to do it, if it has any chance of ever passing, we need to have different tax districts. If you're living in Bonnobbs somewhere, you're not going to have the same police patrols as you have in South Frankfurt.
Sure.
You know, so I think if we have different taxing districts according to the services that you're receiving, I think that would probably sit a little better with county people, because I think the, one of the big issues that county residents ask is, "Why should I pay those increased taxes?"
Right.
You know, and so, I think that would give them the opportunity to not pay as much tax, because they're not receiving as many services.
Okay.
And so, I would hope that that could be incorporated in the charter. I think Lexington urban government does it that way, and it's been, you know, it's worked for them.
Yeah. Well, obviously, that's something that would take a while to happen.
Right.
So, until then, or even if it does happen or never happens or whatever, how will you propose to work together more efficiently between city and county government?
Okay. I think we need to have regular meetings.
Yeah.
You know, they tried that, it went nowhere. I was very sad when I watched that meeting, because they couldn't even agree on an agenda for another meeting. And so, because of that, then they just said, "Oh, to heck with it," and haven't even tried. You know, if our elected officials can't even sit down and work and talk to each other, it's not saying a whole lot for us as leaders in this community. We may not always agree with each other, but that's fine. We can disagree agreeably. You know, it's that whole synergy thing, I think, where when people can sit down and talk to each other, you can have an idea that I've never thought about, or we can be talking about the same idea, but you have a different slant on it than what I've thought about, and so I can be like, "Oh, okay, that would probably work better than what I've proposed."
Sure.
So, without that conversation and being able to sit down and work together, it is a detriment to our community. For instance, I watched the public hearing for the Lakeview Park, and they had their little schematic, you know, of what they want to do there. The city has their plan with Parcels B and C. On the county's proposal, they have a sports/convention center. On the city's proposal, behind the hotel, they have a convention center. We don't need two convention centers in this community.
Right.
You know, and I think it's absurd that the city and county aren't talking together, you know, on one convention center.
Right.
Rather than them both having a convention center on their future planning. That's not, that's not efficient for this community.
Right.
It's not going to work.
Okay. Well, a big issue that has been discussed around Frankfurt, and we, you know, we talk about growth, is economic development.
Right.
So, how would you define economic development?
I define economic development as bringing in good-paying jobs to our community that can increase the wealth of our community, and it increases the tax base, so our schools benefit. It gives the possibility then for more quality-of-life things, like that indoor recreation center with the indoor pool that everybody wants. You know, with the Buffalo Trace, for instance.
Yeah.
You know, the taxes that would be received from those warehouses is $800,000 a year to Franklin County schools. That can make a world of a difference in what Franklin County schools have to offer our kids. So, I think, and there seems to be the dichotomy between economic development and the environment, and I don't see them as mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
You know, I think one of the positive things that Buffalo Trace did in their public meeting, they hired an environmentalist that spent two weeks on that property. The text amendment was, you know, had conditional use then, so it gave then the county, our community, the opportunity to say, "You're going to have to protect the wetlands. You're going to have to protect the old-growth forest," and these type of things. So, I think that we can have economic development and still protect the environment.
We're talking about some industrial development. I know that that is something, we have an organization here, Kentucky Capital Development Corporation. So, what do you, what do you see as their role, and how does it fit into your vision of economic development in our community?
I see KCDC's role as being the person that works for both the city and the county to benefit our entire community. Without KCDC, then the city is doing their thing, and the county is doing their thing, and so they're sort of working against each other. And KCDC works for both to better the community. And I think it's been unfortunate that there's been the controversy, because then industry is probably thinking, "I don't know if I want to go there after all," you know? And so, I think we need to support KCDC in funding and in our attitudes to, so they can truly work to bring more jobs to our community. And it means, again, working together.
Yeah. If elected, would you support the city's continued funding of KCDC?
Most definitely.
Okay. You mentioned the pool issue. It's an issue around here.
Right.
And then, you know, since the closure of the downtown YMCA, Frankfurt has had limited YMCA services and no indoor pool.
Right.
So, how will you be involved to build a new community YMCA with the pool facilities in our community?
I really haven't given a great deal of thought about building a new YMCA, per se.
Uh huh.
I've given a great deal of thought on building an indoor recreation center.
Okay.
I think that it's something that, there's no reason why we can't do it. You know, there, I think, again, it just takes working together, the city, county, industry, possibly the state.
Right.
You know, there's no reason why we can't do it.
Okay.
Other communities have done it.
Sure.
And if it means a Y, okay, you know...
Yeah. Well, recently, the County Parks Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Franklin County Fiscal Court, they're setting up a sports tourism commission, and that commission will be tasked with finding a revenue stream that will fund the construction of a multi-sport complex at Lakeview Park. How should the city government be involved in that process?
Okay. First off, I don't think there should be a sports complex at Lakeview Park.
Okay.
I think it's a bad location.
Okay.
I think the infrastructure, roads, et cetera, are not set up for a sports center at Lakeview Park. I think, again, it has to be the city and county working together for that, because neither one of them have the money on their own. I looked just out of curiosity at, the library is a special taxing district, and they receive $3.2 million a year from the taxes they acquire from being a special taxing district. Now, I know talking about taxing is a, is a bad word, so I don't know that that is the way to go.
Right.
But in listening to public comment at the various meetings, the one the city had, I don't even know how many years ago before they did the Aquatic Center.
Yeah.
And at Lakeview Park, the people that spoke would talk about how much money they're spending by taking their kids to Bowling Green or Elizabeth Town or even to Versailles all the time to have a practice swimming, for instance.
Sure, yeah.
So, my big question that I haven't been able to get an answer to yet is, is the public willing to spend money on a tax dedicated just for an indoor recreation center? Because that would not only help pay the bond to build it, but it would be the revenue stream to run it, to maintain it.
Another issue, we've talked about growth. We talked about economic development, and then we talk about growth and how, you know, other communities around us are outgrowing us.
Right, right.
So, what to you does it mean to be a pro-growth candidate?
It means that we have to bring young families into our community to maintain the tax base that we have, because if we continue with the demographic that we're looking at right now, we're an aging community. Old people aren't paying the same taxes that young families are paying. And so, then you have to raise taxes, and when people look at moving someplace, that's one of the things that they, that they look at. And I don't think, when anyone talks about growth, I don't think anyone plans on the East-West Connector becoming Nicholasville Road or the Waterson Expressway.
Yeah.
You know, that's not what we're talking about. But we do have to continue to bring people in and keep the people that are here to increase the tax base, so we can have those quality-of-life things and just the services that we are used to.
Okay. What's more important for Franklin County right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing, expanding, and better using our existing homes and storefronts?
That's a good question. I think that we have to build new homes, because there's a shortage. And so, while it's important, and I think one of the main things in keeping current things up to date is enforcing the code that's currently on the books. When I was with South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association, that was one of the things that we worked on all the time, was code enforcement. Because when the neighborhood goes down, because people aren't keeping their properties up, then the tax base goes down, and it's, you know, it's a downhill slide. So, I think both are important.
Okay.
Because we, you know, I don't think a new subdivision has been started in Frankfurt in like 14 years. You know, so, when we talk about trying to bring people here and industry here, they have to have someplace to live.
We talked about the budget and needs and everything like that, but as far as being on the city commission, you're going to be making decisions about how that money is spent. So, in addition to things that are going on within the departments of city government, you're going to be approached by different organizations in town who need help with projects, and how do you, how will you handle those requests? And is there particular priorities that you have for funding?
Okay, I guess the priorities I would have would be those human services that are provided by nonprofits. For instance, the homeless situation in our community. We have a real homeless problem, which breeds many other problems. So, I would definitely support giving money to the agencies that provide services to homeless people. There, again, it's just a matter of prioritizing the things that have the greatest effect on our community.
Yeah.
And some things are more important than others, like homelessness, things for making sure that children are given that equal playing field to get started in school, those type of things I would have a priority for.
We've talked about being competitive with our surrounding counties, and not only just from growth, but part of that is having a good business climate. So, what is your vision for improving the business climate in Franklin County so that we can become more competitive and to bring in new businesses and help the businesses that we have here?
I want to hear from businesses, and I want to hear from some of the people that are a part of DIG in the things that have been a problem for them in trying to invest in our community. I read through the subdivision regulations. I'm a glutton for punishment.
Uh oh.
And in reading that, it's like, golly, there's a lot that they have, hoops that they have to jump through.
Sure.
Before they even know if it's going to be approved. I mean, they have to spend a lot of money before they even know it's going to be approved or not. So, I would look at city ordinances and different things within the city in our processes that would make it easier for people to do business. I think the thing of having to run back and forth between the city and county, it would help if there was a one-stop shop where businesspeople could go to get the business license to find out about taxes or other things that, you know, the process that they have to go through.
Yeah. The next question, you have a lot of experience with, because you have served. What is the current process for making board appointments by the city commission, and what changes would you make to that process, and what requirements would you look for in board members?
Okay. Currently, the mayor gets to decide who he wants, he or she wants to appoint, and they bring that name before the city commission. The city commission votes to either accept it or deny it. I think it's one of the few things that the mayor actually gets to do that is different from the rest of the commission. So, I understand mayors not wanting to give up that ability. I think the city needs to let the public know what positions are coming available to see if there is interest in the, in the community. And then, currently, you submit a resume. You fill out their little application. So, that all needs to be done far enough advance, so, in advance, so the public knows what's coming up. They have time to get the information to the city. And then, the mayor needs to look at that and give it to the commission in enough time for the commission to be able to vet the people and decide who is the best qualified. I don't necessarily think, though, by saying that, a caveat here... I don't necessarily think, though, by saying that, caveat here, that, that, for instance, the plant board doesn't just need engineers.
Yeah.
You know, it, because I think by having a broad, a broad education and experience level on boards, it gives them the various viewpoints that are represented by the community.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you being here, we're done. So I'm going to give you the opportunity to address our viewers directly and tell them why they need to vote for you on November 8.
Okay. I appreciate the opportunity of being here and having the opportunity to talk to you all and for the community to be able to know me and my qualifications. I think I've had many years of working in the community. I've shown my dedication, I've shown my love for the community. And that's why I'm running, because we need to make Frankfurt the best it can be. We're so fortunate to be able to live here and have the, the wonderful small-town friendliness and safety and all of the things that Frankfurt has to offer to us. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve and ask for your support on November the 8.
Well, thank you so much for being here, I appreciate your time, sitting down, talking to us about some of these issues. I appreciate our viewers for watching, because it's so important to get informed. You really need to do that before you go vote, but most importantly, you need to go vote on November 8. And when you're done, go home, turn it on Channel 10, check out the election returns. We're going to have them live from the county clerk's office. So thank you for watching, get informed, go vote. It's your voice, please use it, thank you.